Good morning. Welcome to all of you here in the Commissioners Auditorium and those of you who are out watching us this morning in Pitt County. We'll do our call to order and then do our roll call, please. Do we need to excuse?
Mr. Hammond's on his way.
Oh, okay. On his way. Thank you, Dave. We will now stand for our invocation and pledge by Commissioner Garrus and Johnson.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you this morning for your many blessings upon us. We thank you once again for the opportunity we have of assembling together as a community. We thank you, Father, for each one that is in our audience, each one that is viewing us by way of television. We pray that you might bless us now as we conduct the business of the citizens of Pitt County, help us to make those decisions that would be the best for them and those decisions that would please you. These bisons, we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Let's face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Let's vote, please, on the approval of the agenda. Our next item on our agenda, or our first one, is a presentation. I've got to read and make sure that I've got all this correct. 2011 Ability One NISH National Achievement Government Award for State or Local Official. And this is for... If you'll come forward, and do we need to bring Phil forward now?
Just let the gentleman speak first.
Okay. And then we'll bring him forward.
Thank you, Pitt County Government and team, for allowing us to present Mr. Phil Dickerson with his prestigious national award for support of individuals with disabilities. Our partner ECVC is a nonprofit under the Ability One program who displays their mission of helping persons with disabilities obtain a higher quality of life through achievement of vocational goals. ECVC shows this through their mission, shows their mission through their vision of customer appreciation and satisfaction for their employees, community, and external customers, which leads us to why we are here, to recognize Phil Dickerson for his outstanding support of the Ability One program and people with significant disabilities. The Ability One program was established to create employment opportunities for people with significant disabilities, and now there are over 600 nonprofit agencies associated with the program. The mission of the program leads us to the significance of this community award for government local official. The award recognizes a local government official who has relationships with and who supports Ability One producing nonprofits and encourages their continued support of local nonprofits and the Ability One program efforts. Phil Dickerson has more than demonstrated this through his service to the Pitt County Government here in North Carolina. In his role as Pitt County engineer and liaison with nonprofits, he has expanded work opportunities for people with disabilities through engineering services and technical consultation on joint county and nonprofit projects. The proof is in the near 80,000 hours last year put in by employees with disabilities in custodial, recycling, and pre-vocational operations who are now earning an income. Phil is able to balance what is good for the local government with savings of $257,000 in recycling operations and what is good for individuals with disabilities by developing these much-needed jobs. Phil Dickerson is one of the finest examples of societal inclusion in his work with ECVC for individuals with significant disabilities. His determination in finding a way to make projects mutually acceptable and mutually successful raises the bar for the rest of us, and that is why we are here to honor Mr. Phil Dickerson with the Ability One NISH 2011 National Achievement Award for Government Local Official. Phil, thank you for your amazing contributions.
I'd like to ask those people who are here to support that serve on the board or have benefited to stand. I think we've got a lot of people in the audience. Thank you all for coming. We want to hear you talk, Mr. Dickerson. Sometimes we have to wring it out of him to... He tells us only what we need to hear, and that's it.
I think all of you have heard it said that there's no limit to what can be accomplished if no one cares who gets the credit. I think that principle is operating here not on my part but on ECVC's part. They nominated me for this award, and I think they've been the driving force behind the accomplishments that this award represents. And there are quite a few individuals and groups who have supported the contributions that ECVC has made to employ the handicap. First, there is ECVC and the Pitt County Board of Commissioners. Back in the 1970s, Howard Dawkins and Doug Bonds came to see me and asked me if I would go down to Tickbite and survey the property that housed a cardboard and newspaper recycling facility. I actually did the work for them, and 10 years later, or more, when everybody in the state was scrambling trying to recycle effectively and efficiently, the first thing I thought about was ECVC already has 20 years' experience with newspaper and cardboard recycling. So we contacted ECVC, and Bob Jones, Doug Bonds, and Dan LaRue agreed to help us develop the program. And now I come to the Board of Commissioners. In 1991, the Board of Commissioners bought a new cardboard baler for ECVC at a cost of about $300,000. They agreed to increase their recycling capacity, and they did more than they promised to do. Next move was in 1995. A major renovation occurred at the ECVC recycling facility. We converted it into a Murphy that could process all kinds of recyclables. That was at a cost of $800,000. Now, I've just talked about $1.1 million in costs. That's a big figure today, but think about how big it was a few years ago. Since that time, the volume of recyclables processed at ECVC has increased to 18,000 tons annually. If you multiply this out, this comes out to a total savings of $600,000 a year. I asked Bob where he got the $257,000 figure that was just mentioned. He said he got it from me. So it's actually 600,000. I told him next time I told him something like that, to please challenge me. Then we have the employees of Solid Waste and Engineering Department. John Weaver, professional engineer, was able to take the ideas for the recycling facility, the ideas that ECVC had, put them on paper, and developed specifications so that a building and facility was built that's still operating effectively today. Pam Keel was just tremendous help in organizing things, and I'm sure she did a lot of things that I don't even know about, but she helped make it happen. Then Ability One, which, as Mickey's already said, is an organization who supports vocational centers and sheltered workshops in bringing about jobs for the handicap. When we were developing all this, we knew that... I'm sorry, I used the wrong word. It's not handicaps, people with disabilities. But anyway, when we were doing all this, we realized that people with disabilities would be doing most of the work. What we probably didn't realize was that these people have exceptional and untapped abilities to do work, and we would utilize those abilities. And these jobs are not something that will just be here today and gone tomorrow. I think they'll be sustained through the foreseeable future. So I'll close with this. I mentioned several individuals and organizations who've been very helpful in bringing us to where we are today. In fact, they've done it, and I haven't done it. They have. And I'm sure I wouldn't be standing here today if even one of those people hadn't performed as they did in bringing the jobs to the disabled in Pitt County. So with that, I'd like to thank NISH and Ability One for bringing this recognition to Pitt County, and thank the Board for the support, and just thank them in general.
Phil, we want to thank you for everything you've done, and this is just one little piece of what ECVC does for our community and our whole region. And I'll never forget, the second year that I was a Commissioner, they took us around on a little bus and showed some of us who didn't know a whole lot about what was going on in county government at that time, and we visited the recycling center and other programs that are going on at ECVC at their older site. And I'm here to tell you, the citizens of this county, it's like a hidden treasure out there, and we appreciate everything that everybody does out there, not just for our citizens with disabilities, but also for all of our citizens, because the contribution is tremendous. Thank you again, and thank you, Phil, for being a part of Pitt County Government.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have the great privilege of serving on that board, and I think it's one of the most rewarding and dedicated boards in this county. They serve humanity from the heart, and they give. This board gives themselves, and I certainly want to congratulate Bob Jones for his leadership, but Dan LaRue also was the godfather of the service of this board. He's back in the back, and he certainly has done such a tremendous job in uplifting the spirit of the cause of this board. I want to mention that because some people don't understand the significance of this board in terms of helping those individuals from their heart with disabilities, and for that, I want to thank all of you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Our next item of business is our public address to the board. Do we have someone signed up, Mr. Manager?
Yes, Madam Chairman, we have two people. First, we have Albert Sanchez, who will come to the podium.
What's the deputy? I can't.
I'm not sure.
Timberlake, what's the deputy's name?
Johnson.
Okay. Just a moment. We've got somebody that'll give you some...
There's the microphone right here. Good morning. I am Albert Sanchez. I am president of the Pitt County Chapter of the National Federation of the Blind of Pitt County. We are here to talk briefly about funding, hopefully at the stronger, higher levels, for the Pitt area transit system, Pats. Many of our members use Pats on a regular basis to go to doctor's appointments, to go to work, to and from work, to and from the pharmacy to pick up your prescriptions, to do any number of things as independent people who can't drive try to do. It's our understanding that the Pats system has been plagued with budget cuts, which have caused them to have to dismiss at least four part-time drivers. In that same time, there have been two retired positions, two drivers retire from their position, so they're even cut back by two more. There's a job freeze. It's our understanding that it's keeping the Pats from hiring people to fill these positions, and this is beginning to affect the timeliness of the operation, the efficiency of the operation. If I schedule a doctor's appointment for like 9:30, hopefully I will be picked up in a timely fashion so that I will be able to be there at that time, not 30 minutes or 45 minutes later. If I'm working and have to go to a job, I need to be there at the time of that job start time, not 30 minutes or 45 minutes past that. What happens is, as the system is cut funding, people find it frustrating to use, so they stop using it. It's vital to us to use it. It's like you can get in your car and have independent travel to wherever you need to go. The budget cuts and the job freeze is like taking our independence away from us by cutting the services. We urge you in the strongest terms possible to find better funding for Pats so that it can continue a very good operation and be able to pick up more riders, more drivers, and more management possibly to efficiently run the operation. I appreciate the time to address you this morning, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. And I think we have one other person.
Yes, we have Geraldine Sanchez.
I'm not sure I'm being heard. There we go. I just want to stress one point that my husband made. He said, "Taking away funding for Pats is like taking access to transportation." Just imagine how many times you get in your car, just in one day. Groceries for dinner tonight? No problem. You hop in your car. Need that prescription? You hop in your car. Doctor's appointment? Babysitting a family for some family member who needs you? Any of that. You hop in your car. It was stressed to me how important cars were when my husband and I were coming out of a restaurant one day, and the hostess at the door said, "Can I walk you to your car?" I wish they could. I was tempted to ask her to pick out the fanciest car and tell her that was mine, but I didn't do that. Cars in this city are vital, and in the county, they're indispensable, especially since there are places where there are no sidewalks and other places where there are sidewalks on one side of the street and not on the other. It really is important to be able to be independent. Remember that the people who get driven to work are the people who pay their taxes, who vote, who do all the things that citizens do, and who are productive citizens in many cases because they have the ability to be driven to work independently. That has been cut for many people, especially people out in the county. So I really urge you, when you're cutting budgets, to consider what you're doing. This is a very good paratransit system. It's one of the best I've seen, and I've seen a number of them. It still is relatively on time, in spite of all the cuts, but it's struggling, and things are getting more and more desperate there and more and more frustrating. And if the good people who are working there are lost, the system will be lost. So please, let's not use the knife of shredding and budget cutting too freely, especially when we're dealing with this. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is that all?
Yes, ma'am.
We have signed up? Okay. Our next item is our items for report. Our manager, Scott Elliott?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. First item, the next meeting dates. You have May 21st at 6:00 PM will be your next regular meeting, then June 4th at 9:00 AM. The public hearing on the fiscal year 1213 budget will be Tuesday, June 12th at 7:00 PM here in your meeting chambers. Been asked to announce on item B that there will be a citizens informational workshop for Project U-5006, and this is basically the extension of Fire Tower Road from Memorial Drive to the proposed southwest bypass. This will be on May the 8th, and it will be starting at 2:30. It will be held at Pitt Community College in Room 137. Want to make the Board aware, your budget workshops coming up, the first full week will begin the week of May the 21st. You'll have a regular meeting that night on May 21st, as I announced a moment ago. Then, starting Tuesday, the 22nd through Friday, the 25th, your budget workshops will begin, as you have traditionally done here in your chambers, begin at 8:30 in the morning and running till somewhere around noon or maybe a little thereafter. The following week is held for budget workshops as well. We've always had that on the calendar. We have not had to do that in years past, but always held it just in case it was needed. So item D, if you were to go into budget workshops, there is an event on Wednesday, May the 30th, which is County Assembly Day. We would need to hold that day aside to go to Raleigh to meet with the legislature. Item E, we are very happy and pleased to announce and bring to the public's attention prestigious news on our tax administrator, Kathy Booker. She's been elected president of the North Carolina Tax Collectors Association. And Kathy, if you'd stand up, just like to recognize you, and her leadership will guide that organization over the next year. Item F is in regards to the county's HVAC maintenance and repair. I had announced to the Board a few months back that we were looking at developing an RFP, which is a request for proposal, to look at possibly privatizing that entire portion of the Buildings and Grounds Department. We have developed our RFP. It is rather lengthy and thick. It's been advertised. We've melded it out to, I think, 40 or 50 different firms, local and within the area, and we will be receiving proposals back into the month. And what my plan is, if they are to the county's advantage, both operationally and financially, to bring it back to you. If not, we will then continue down the path of filling those positions within Buildings and Grounds. If we were to privatize it, then I would recommend that we eliminate or delete those positions that are within the Buildings and Grounds Department. Item H, the Board is aware you had a joint workshop meeting with the Pitt County Sew and Water Board probably four weeks ago regarding the topic of voluntary agricultural districts, and had been asked just to follow up on that to let the Board, let you know that we are pursuing forward with that project and that the consultant is on board, and they're developing the plan for Pitt County. That'll come back to you as was presented, but just want to let you know that that is moving forward. On item I, wanted to... I'm sure that the Boards are already aware, but everybody saw on Saturday's newspaper, the front page article on our deputy county manager, Chief Financial Officer Melanie Bryan, and with her imminent retirement coming up in July, that came up with a plan, kind of a recruitment plan in terms of, A, right now I'm looking at the job description, making any updates that are needed. We will be advertising both internally and externally for the position, and we'll have an interview panel, just like was done when she was hired years ago. This is obviously one position that I find key, that I feel like I do need to backfill. Just wanted to let the Board know that those were my plans on that, unless the Board has any direction for me otherwise. Other than that, Madam Chairman, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Our next item under reports are our ABC Board Quarterly Report. Teresa Campbell, if you'll come forward, please.
Good morning, Chairman Ward, Vice Chair Garrus, members of the Board, and guests. I'm here this morning to give you a brief overview of the Pitt County ABC Board's third quarter. First, I'll compare the gross sales from the previous year, working capital, and then year-to-date distribution and retention. Next, I'll compare the distributions from the previous year, and finally, the total distributions made to the county. On our first slide here, you can see the gross sales. Basically, what I did here was compared them to the third quarter of 2011, comparing to this year's. The change in sales was an increase of $413,879.80, which is great. We didn't even do that for the entire year last year. On our next slide, we have working capital. Basically, this is the minimum allowed working capital is two weeks of net sales, which is what we had at the end of 6/30 of 2011, was $1,747,212.91. Our working capital target, which is based on 12 weeks of our net sales, was $2,756,000. As of 3/31/2012, it was at $2,312,512.27. Before our required distribution to the county of $96,637.27, and then the anticipated additional funds of $178,362.73, which leaves us with a working capital of $2,37,512.27. And that is comprised of cash and inventory as well. Year-to-date distribution and retention, our change in net assets before profit distribution was $1,093,023.29. We made the actual distributions of $550,000, and for the third quarter, the required distribution was $96,637.27, and the additional anticipated distribution, which was $178,362.73, for a total of $825,000 through the end of the third quarter. If you'll notice here, that's about 75.5% of our profit distributions, and what we retained in working capital was $268,023 for this year so far. Next, for the profit distribution comparison, the statutory 3.5% in 2011 compared to 2012, the additional distribution from working capital, and the total distribution was $275,000 in 2011 as it was in 2012. So our total distribution for this year, with the beverage price support, which is the nickel penny bottle tax that's paid on a monthly basis of $13,593.57, with the additional $275,000 profit distribution, comes to a total of $288,593.57 for this year total. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes, I think maybe we do, and I'll just... Mr. Garrus has one, and if you have one, if you'll raise your hand. Okay, Mr. James.
First of all, I want to say thank you and your Board for coming through with the allocation that you've come through this year, and I guess one of my concerns is I saw somewhere where you have included in your budget for next year a distribution to the county of $1 million, and I was wondering why that wasn't 1.1.
We can't guarantee any amount, as we've told you in the past, and basically, we base that on what our sales were for the previous year.
Right.
And we went with $1 million because we thought that's what we would be able to pass to the county.
Okay. I believe... What is the total you're going to do this year?
1.1.
Okay. And what we would expect, I think...
Well, that's what we're... We're not guaranteeing that. That's what we...
Can we stop just one second?
Sure.
Do I need to move?
Yes, sir. Pull him back a little bit more. Pull him back a little bit more. I don't think we'll make it unless she get up. Here we go. You'll bear with us just a second.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Sorry, Mr. Garris.
Ma'am, I can tell you.
Please do. And I'm sorry. I apologize. And if you want to back up and start at the beginning, that'll be fine.
My point, my point is that, you know, we're all concerned about next year.
Yes, sir.
And I am sure that next year is going to be as challenging, if not more challenging, than this year I was. So, you know, we would be expecting, I believe, and I'm speaking for myself, but I think I speak for the board, we would surely be expecting at least to get the same amount next year that we got this year, which is a 1.1 million.
Okay. I understand.
Mr. James?
I want to, Teresa, back up what he said. I believe you said that, too, that you've had the best so far this year that you've had in a long time. We appreciate that. I want to ask you also to take and to look at all of your personnel, everything. We had a meeting with a lot of our people here in Greenville, and this guy has some good ideas. He said, no matter what, we're looking at ways that we can improve what we're doing. And I think the ABC Board should be doing the same thing. Look at ways that we can do about a job with less money. Commissioner Garris is exactly right. We're going to be short of money again next year. We don't need to be cutting. And we know these people, these football games and these others are going to keep right on buying that booze.
Yes, sir.
They're going to spend that money, and we might as well get our share of it. So I wouldn't even, that one, that 1 million, I'm not looking to cut $100,000. I wouldn't see that increase personally. I really do. Because we're going to be in bad shape, and it's going to be, I hope that you all can look at ways that you can cut some of your expenses so that we can use it, such as with the busing and so forth, that we need it so badly.
Yes, sir. And the key word there is anticipated, in the letter when I said it was anticipated.
I know. But I don't want you to anticipate lord of what we need and want, and we think that we deserve.
Yes, sir.
I'm supporting what Commissioner Garris, except I want to go a little bit farther. I want to see a little bit higher, Commissioner Garris.
Mr. McLawhorn, did you have...
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Having said of this board, I think that the board seems to have the county interest at heart now. And Teresa may have mentioned this, that we may even, depending on the sales, be able to increase. And it's not, it's not certain to that, that it's going to be $1 million as it was stated. So I think the plans are to continue, as Mr. James you just alluded to, is to continue to help the county as much as possible. And I think the board is due diligent in that, in that aspect of trying to make this accomplishment.
Good. That's good.
Any other questions? Okay. I'd like to say one thing, and then we'll move to accept the report. I think probably what we're saying is, even during our budget discussion and talk, we try to project the very best that we can, and sometimes it falls short, you know, in the end when it comes. But I think that, I heard exactly what Mr. McLawhorn said. I know how things have happened in the past quarters, and we really appreciate that and the function. But I think that we would appreciate the projection being at least where we are right now, instead of, you know, dropping it back. So I think that's kind of what we're saying as much as anything. And if there's a possibility for increasing, that would be another story also.
Okay.
But thank you so much, Teresa.
Thank you.
And we need to motion for approval.
So moved.
Okay. Let's vote, please, on the acceptance of this report.
Teresa, be sure to thank your board, that we do appreciate it.
Yes, do. Thank you all. And our, before I recognize, Ms. Bryan, you can come on up, but our manager left off one thing on his report, and he's going to do that now, before we both forget it later.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Item G, the recognition of the Pitt County departments that have received departmental safety awards from the North Carolina Department of Labor. There was a banquet back in, on April 10th, sponsored by the Department of Labor and the Pitt County Greenville Chamber of Commerce. We had a number of departments that received safety awards, and just wanted to go through this real quick. The awards look like this, and they're, they can take them and nicely frame them. But we had two departments that got a sixth year, or received a six-year, a six consecutive year award, that being Public Health and then General Government, and is a lump category. A department that got a second year consecutive award was the PATH System. A first-year gold award was Animal Control and Department of Social Services. And a first-year silver award is Detention Center. And these awards are based upon the safety records within the department. So I just wanted to recognize them, and we'll be providing these certificates to them so they can appropriately display them within the departments. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll hear from Ms. Bryan and our staff report and the results from our rating agency visits.
Good morning. The manager and I just wanted to take a minute to share the results of our recent visit to New York and the rating agencies. As you know, we had approached the board this year about advanced refunding some 2004 bonds, and in conjunction with a bond sale like that, you get a review by the rating agencies. I would report that we sold our bonds last Tuesday. We realized savings of almost 7%, which amounts to $1.7 million over the next 17 years, which is much greater than we even thought we would do when we initially, we were hoping to hit the 4% to 5% range in savings, and we were at 6.7% savings. So that is all general fund savings, which will help with budget this spring. But we did visit with Moody's, Fitch, and Standard and Poor's over the 12th and 13th of April. We did retain our AA bond rating with all three agencies. However, with Fitch, where we actually enjoy a one-click hire rating, we have AA plus ratings with them, they put us on a negative outlook. Negative outlook means every 12 months, they will review you whether or not you're doing a bond sale or not. And their negative outlook was because of our spend-down of fund balance over the last three fiscal years, and the pressure the economy has put on our budget. We did talk about returning to, you know, a posture of not spending down fund balance, appropriating far less fund balance in the budget we are drafting for 1213. They do still recognize us as a great credit. I think that's evidenced by the fact that we started selling bonds last week at 9:00 in the morning, and by 12:15, all 20 million in bonds had been sold. So we were very happy to come, to come home with our ratings intact and our ratings confirmed. And I do think, like I said, the budget that we are drafting for next fiscal year will go a long way to removing that negative outlook the next time Fitch reviews us next spring.
This is an amazing accomplishment, and to be able to keep this going year after year is wonderful. And it does make a big difference when it comes to our budgeting and our capital expenses that we have to pay out. Thank you so much for what you do there, and you do, Mr. Manager, and those who went. Okay. Anything else? Sure.
Can I ask back a follow-up comment? Melanie did a good job presenting that, and just wanted to follow up and say that in the budget development, when we start the budget workshops, you're going to see, in terms of fund balance, we've talked about the lowering of that appropriation, because we faced a tough crowd when we went before three L-bond rating agencies, one more tough than the other two, and that being Fitch. But we spent a considerable amount of time on the fund balance decrease in appropriation and use of fund balance. And as Melanie had said, we're going to, we're going to be reviewed in a year, and we would like to keep that AA rating for future borrowings. It's an important indicator for Pitt County government, but we'll talk more in budget workshops about that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Owens?
Scott and Melanie, on two of the enclosures we have, we allude to the fact of, that the agents had looked at, we fell below the county policy of 18% to 20%.
Yes, sir.
Then on another page, we said we do not have a formalized balance policy. Since they are weighing so heavily on the issue of fund balance, I was wondering if it might be, well, if we had a formalized policy for fund balance.
You do, the board has adopted a fund balance policy that says that the board has a goal to have 18% to 20% fund balance. Right now, our fund balance is filtered just slightly above 14%. And that was one thing we had to defend with them as well. I'm sorry, 12%. 14% was the year before.
We call it a goal, and that's the difference, because we call it a fund balance goal. If you all had a fund balance mandate...
That's my point, Melanie.
That would be what they refer to. And because it's a goal, they don't necessarily see that there are any teeth if you aren't at the 18% to 20%. If you make it a formal mandate, you are far away from the 18% to 20% right now, because you're just over 12%. And we would need, you know, half as much as we currently have to put us back into that posture.
My question is, do you think a formalizing would help you with the agencies?
Not unless you are going to get back to that mark.
Well, do they rely on what the state figures are?
The state is only a recommendation of 8%, which, and they're even talking about...
That's my point. Do they, do they get into that?
Not really.
Okay.
It would be a detriment to make that a mandate, because we would have to appropriate a whole lot of additional money to achieve an 18% to 20% mandate versus having it as a goal.
This is an issue we can talk about in the budget, but I just wanted to review.
Good point.
And this report had two different issues in it.
Thank you for bringing that out. And now we'll hear from our attorney. At our last meeting, it was suggested that we take a look at the disposal of our surplus motor vehicles, and our attorney has looked into that, and she's going to give us a report on that now.
I have, thank you very much. And you have some information in your packet, and I believe in your Friday packet as well, a more detailed memo on it. The bottom line there is that the general statutes give us the authority to dispose of surplus property in various ways. One of those ways is by public auction. Based on the information that I could determine from Greenville Auto Auction's website, they are a private dealers-only auto auction, which would not have them fall within the definition of a public auction. I did hear from Commissioner McLawhorn this weekend, and he has had some additional conversations with Greenville Auto Auction, to the effect that they would be willing for a government entity to open their auction to the public, and that they would be willing to abide by the county's terms and conditions. If that's the case, then we could certainly have further discussion with Greenville Auto Auction, if that's something this board wanted to do. As their current website lays out, they're not a viable legal option for the county to use. We currently use GovDeals. We've had tremendous success on GovDeals. In the past, we had utilized a private auctioneer, and you can do that as well. The county board would have to adopt a resolution, setting forth the date, time, place, terms, and conditions of any public sale. You can legally contract with an auctioneer, who in the past has gone on county property and sold vehicles. We have realized greater return in dollars through GovDeals.com than we have through those auctioneer processes, in part because GovDeals reaches a nationwide audience. So we're saying, selling vehicles as far as Florida and different places across the country. We recently returned, and Melanie Bryan may be able to assist me here, $2,500 on a vehicle with some significant damage on it, and the county, in order for that process to happen, paid about $188, whereas our total cost in using that online auction site to bring in that kind of return. So we're seeing decent returns. GovDeals.com, it seems to be, I did an inquiry to the other county attorneys through one of our listserv sites, and it appears that most are seeing good success with GovDeals.com. That doesn't mean that you couldn't use Greenville Auto Auction. If Greenville Auto Auction were willing to modify their published practices, make themselves open to the public, follow the terms and conditions, date and place of sale as determined by this board. And if the board wants to do that, I'm certainly willing to speak with the folks at Greenville Auto Auction or any other site that you may designate, to give it a try to compare. But in terms of the legality, so long as they follow this board's directives and are open to the public, you could handle it in that fashion.
Okay.
I think it's important to note, so I can follow up, that when we used to auction the cars off locally with an auctioneer, we might get $700, $800, $900 compared to the $2,500 kind of anomaly, which is probably the best-case scenario. We're getting probably $1,700, $1,800 per car, especially if they're a police package or coming from the sheriff's department, which is, you know, good three times, two, three times more than what we got through a local auctioneer with a local audience.
The other point I would make back when we used to do an annual, once-a-year sale, where we would do desks and tables and everything under the sun, we ran into storage issues. The beauty of GovDeals, if we have one car to sell today, we can list one car. If we have, to be fortunate enough to swap out five cars, but there's no storage issues because you're holding it waiting to get enough to do a sale. So if the car Janice is referring to was totally wrecked, but somebody wanted it for parts, and so we see a lot of interest. We see a lot of buyers from Georgia, South Carolina, Alabama, Arkansas, folks from up north. And we don't, we don't have to wait until we have enough cars to make a sale. We'll list them as soon as the department tells me they've got spare something, excess something, or a car. It goes online, and it's an as-is, where-is type thing. So we're not making any guarantees as to whether or not it'll even run when these folks come in to buy it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Comments and questions? I saw Mr. McLawhorn's hand, and then Mr. James.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My concern was that we keep as much money flowing here in Pitt County as possible. And after having learned of what our attorney just mentioned about, they have federal vehicles now at the Greenville Auto Auction, and they are open to the public. I think certainly that we should do nothing less than abide by our statute, which is open it to the public. So I think if nothing else, that we need, that we should possibly give this a try, and at least on the basis to monitor it for a while and see how things are going. I don't have a problem with that, because I think it's, again, it's keeping the flow of monies here in Pitt County. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. James?
I do know this, the more you have to sell altogether, the cheaper they're going to be in normal conditions. Our sheriff is here, and I think probably he's had a lot of experience over the years as to the best way to take in the market these cars. A lot of them are purchased, just like you were talking about, for parts. You can get more for that sometimes, a lot more than you can any other way. If I may ask, Neil, have you had, I know you've had experience with selling them and so forth, what is your recommendation that we can get the most money that's possible out of these vehicles? Because I know a lot of them are from the sheriff's department, of course.
Well, believe it or not, the, a lot of the vehicles we feel like are no longer usable to our agency, have been bringing a great price through the sales. We're finding that no longer the fact they're making the Crown Vic anymore, people are buying up every part they can get for them to keep them running, because a lot of your agencies include law enforcement, and cab companies are buying these parts, because that's majority of their fleet. They can't even buy replacement parts for them anymore. So they're looking to buy these cars, and miraculously, they are bringing $1,200 for a car that if you were to buy it off a car lot, would be surprised to bring $500 for. To answer your question, I haven't really not had any experience of selling cars here. This is the way it's always been done since I've started. I know auctions, if they have a public auction, it usually brings a big crowd. I've been to some of the state sales in Raleigh and the state sales here, and they do bring a big crowd. I don't see anything wrong with trying it for 30 days or 60 days and seeing how it goes, and less the way out, what our bigger returns would be. You know, quite naturally, we want to get our most return, and it'd just be a matter of how we capture the audience and get it done. I would be up to be willing to try that and see if it would work, and then we would know the results after a sale or two. Right now, the cars we have in are few and far between. Hopefully, we can have some cars to sell real soon.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Owens?
I think we've looked at this previously, and that's the reason we went to this system that we have now. And if we can make any change, and of course, I'm all for locals, too. But my first priority is to get the most money out of what we're selling. And I think before we go too far in making transitions of change... And I think before we go too far in making transitions of change, I'd like to see some statistics on the prior, the local public sale versus what we best been told we're getting, what we have presently. That's my-
Okay, good idea. Mr. Garris?
I would see this as going backwards, because I remember when we did sell them out on County Home Road, I went to some of the sales, and the cars went off very, very cheaply. I've also had some experience with the auction. I put a, a personal car out there one time, and quite frankly, I was disappointed at what it brought. It appears to me that when we went to the GovDeals, that we tripled our income from the sale of those cars. And also, it would appear to me that with the GovDeals, your audience is much wider, much broader, so you have more people bidding. And that system has worked well, and since it has worked well, I don't see any need of changing it.
Okay. I'd like to make one comment, and that is that I support local businesses and local people, but I also support the fact that the amount of money that we get back from these sales, regardless of what it is, ownGovDeals.com, is higher, three times as high as it caused previously. And that money comes to the citizens also. So, you know, in the county by way of, you know, supporting the services that we have to support here in the county. So, that said, do we need a motion or to proceed one way or the other, or are we going to stay as we are?
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
All right, it's upstairs we are now. From what Commissioner McLawhorn was suggesting, that we changed, and of course, the sheriff did too, and just try it for a thirty-day period. Have we ever tried this method before that we're talking about?
Not through Greenville Auto Auction. One of our, the cars, we just had four cars that we put up for auction on GovDeals.com. Unless we're going to be buying new cars in the future, in the next thirty days, we may not have another vehicle. Sixty days from now, we may have ten. We may have, so, I mean, I would suggest, as Commissioner Owens had mentioned, maybe we could get some numbers from Greenville Auto Auction as to if they're doing these federal vehicles.
Yeah, I think that's the way to do it.
Let's see what, what percentage that they're taking, what dollar they're getting, indication as to what the dollar value is.
That's good. I think that's the way to go.
I could report back to the board if you're-
And just bring that information back to us. Does that suit? Thank you, Dave.
And then if, based on that information, you choose to go down that road, this board would have to adopt a resolution-
Okay.
... that sets forth the date, time, and place, terms, and conditions of the public auction. In that resolution, you would designate your auctioneer, if that were Greenville Auto Auction or some other entity, and then it, the sale would take place after that. So there would still be another step before you could move forward.
Okay, thank you.
You need to know the commission and so forth from them.
I'm sorry?
You need to know the commission, that they're going to be getting from them.
Yes. Janice, can you clarify? Does, does that have to come back to this board then for final approval?
Yes.
Even after, even after it goes to the auction block?
Yes, because that's how the general statutes read in terms of your terms and conditions. Ultimate authority remains with this board, because this board has the inherent legal authority to reject all bids if you so choose to. And that, and that's something we'd need to talk with Greenville Auto Auction about, because that's not their typical process for their regular sales now, but they may be willing to agree to that for a government sale.
Okay, Mr. Garris?
You mean, if we auctioned a car off at this local auction place, and it went to the highest bidder, it would have to come back to this board for approval?
Well, typically, that would be the, unless you change the terms and conditions-
Because we don't do that with the GovDeals?
No, because GovDeals goes under a different statute, under a different section of the law that's just authorized to, for a government to utilize an internet auction company's procedures. If it's not an internet auction company, the ultimate authority is up to this board. It would be no different. You would treat them as if they were the private auctioneer standing on county property selling once a year. And that's ultimately within the authority of the board. And you do have prior examples of resolutions, having done that in the past.
Okay, so right now, we're going to wait to hear back on the results of selling the federal vehicles, which would be closest to what we would be doing as a state agency. And then we will talk again about whether that's the way we want to go, and if we do, we'll be following that process that you just stated. Okay? Thank you very much. Our next item is Mr. Dickerson to report on the Chicago Sewer Project, giving us an update.
As your agenda abstract says, bids were taken on April 3rd, and the lowest bid was $2,77,000 in change. Next bid was $500,000 higher than that. If you go to the second page, there's a listing of the project funding sources and the project cost. Near the bottom, just above total funding, under project funding, it indicates a loan amount of $544,098 that's unsecured. It is now secured. So the total loan that we are, is approved would be $544,098 plus the $1,428,249. So the $544 is really exceeding the money that we had to work with. However, there will be some offset from Greenville Utilities. The school board has requested $800,000 contribution from Greenville Utilities. And the Greenville Utilities hasn't met yet. The Utilities Board and the city council will have to approve any change in the project budget amount for that agency. With that, I'd be glad to try to answer any questions.
Mr. James?
Have we got this money? You talking about borrowing it or what?
The million-nine-
Yeah.
-is loaned by, this is school's money, so-
All right, the school has got the money. I thought they were broke like we are. So they got plenty of money.
Well, this is a loan amount. It's $500,000, Rural Center grant, and a million-nine loan at two percent.
So you're thinking maybe that Greenville Utilities is going to help us out a little bit on that?
Greenville Utilities will pretty definitely help out, at least $200,000. So we hope, hopefully more.
Yeah. You can do better than that.
This, this project is actually a Pitt County school system project. The engineering department, the county government, is administrating it on their behalf. The school system will give the notice to proceed. The school system will be signing any contracts and, and whatnot on the project. But we are, because Phil has experience with water and sewer and contract administration, we are assisting them on the project. So a lot of these approvals and such are really up to the school system with our assistance.
Okay, and we thank you for your report, Mr. Dickerson. Our next-
Wait a minute. I, I'm not satisfied with this thing. We talking about a lot of money. Did even have to hide the sewer system out there to begin with. They didn't, they didn't used to. I mean, but they're not much news. Why are we spending that money there?
Well, speaking of the system, it's been failing for years out there.
Well, it worked when I was there, and that's been a long time ago. Let's get back in.
The, the original school was built in 1929, so we're well, we're well over eighty years old. The, as Mr. Dickerson says, the, the septic system out there is failing, and right now, the next major capital project the school system had, has, is the Chicago campus. They want to tear down the twenty-nine building, nineteen-twenty-nine buildings and build a, I think it's probably $20 million worth of additional work out there. That's, that campus cannot be improved unless public sewer is brought out there via this Chicago Sewer Project. So this is positioning them to allow them to do that. Well, A, it's positioning them to take care of the existing failing septic system needs out there, and it's positioning them for some point in the future to build the expanded campus.
Mr. Man, I cannot believe this. You're saying twenty more million? How many millions have you already spent there for elementary school? How many millions already? You talking about twenty more million?
I don't know that school board.
Mr. James?
Yes.
I want the manager to reiterate that this is not a new project.
Correct.
This is something that, well, just so the public knows, that this is a project that we've been talking about for a long time, and have approved the process up to this point.
And to clarify too, Melanie, the total amount that we will have, the school system will have expended, including the sewer, the current site work and such, is it up to $20 million when it's done, once they expand the campus?
Yes.
So it'll be $20 million at the end of the day, once the campus is totally complete.
So it's not twenty more million, but the total amount of the bill for the entire elementary school is $20 million?
That's the total projected amount, Mr. James. That's subject to change at the point where you bid it out. Just like this, when it was bid out, came in $500,000 higher than anticipated. It's all market-driven. But they've spent right at $2 million on all of the site improvements, and then you've got this project. And then at some point in the future, they will do some, some building improvements, but that won't come forward in the next year, because the funding stream isn't there.
Well, that's the most expensive school we got anywhere, even high schools. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Does that answer your question, Mr. James?
It don't answer what a bag of beans, but I'd go with it.
Okay, then Mr. Owens has an opportunity.
It's not right. I think Ethan could probably enlighten us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. I have him down next. Thank you, Mr. Owens.
Well, the first thing I'm going to say, when you were there, Mr. James, the distribution lines from the septic tank ran in the swamp down there.
Ran in the swamp down there, that means you had to go across the highway.
No, no, it went through the field.
Ben Houston Garden, and the mill was on one side, and Ben Houston Garden, they were down a little road.
Well, it ran, it ran through the ditch and field. But the school system, the school was built in 1929. It's been on this, one of the state's list that needs replacing for several years. I think it's going to cost somebody, the county or the school system has added a wing out there and some classrooms, but they have no way added the old school like they-
Cafeteria.
Well, the cafeteria, yes.
Oh, yes.
That was built in, oh, the late seventies.
I've been down, I know.
Okay.
But anyway, that's beside the point.
Anything else from anybody else? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Dickerson. I'll entertain a motion for consent.
Sure.
Okay, let's vote, please.
Consent. Consent.
Mr. Hammond and Mr. Webb?
The septic tank ran in the swamp.
Okay. Our items for decision. Ms. Gallagher, you're up again, with the Greenville Utilities Commission Electrical Easement.
Yes, Greenville Utilities Commission has requested a utilities easement at the Sollway's Transfer Station, at the county's request, in order to move a transformer from one spot to another. The transformer's often getting hit by trucks, so they're going to move it to a different location and work on the lines there. I'd recommend that you approve the easement.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
All right, any comments?
They already have an easement for the overhead lines there.
Right, exactly.
Yes.
Let's vote, please.
Yeah, let's give it to them. Maybe they'll help us out.
Now we'll hear from you again, Madam Attorney, relative to the policy for preventing smoking in county buildings and vehicles at our request.
At your March 26th meeting, this board directed staff to draft a policy to prohibit smoking in county buildings and vehicles. I have proposed and drafted with the cooperation and assistance of your members of the management team, input from Human Resources, a policy that prohibits smoking in county buildings and vehicles, and requires signage to be posted to that effect. It does still allow smoking on county grounds, and it gives the county manager authority to designate smoking areas outside. This is primarily in response to written complaints that the manager has received from employees who are, are wanting smoking to stop in the county facilities as they currently exist, and then the board's direction to draft a policy to consider it. So in terms of enforcement, this doesn't go nearly as far as some of our counterparts, other counties, or the city of Greenville, for example. A violation of their policy results in criminal action, and fines can be imposed. The enforcement here is, if you're a county employee and you continue to smoke, it could subject you to disciplinary action. If you are not a county employee, you'll be asked to stop smoking in the buildings or vehicles, and if you refuse, then you could be asked to leave until you discontinue. So enforcement is soft. It is a step towards the county going smoke-free in its buildings and vehicles, and retaining the rights of smokers just on county grounds outdoors.
Okay. Mr. Owens, had his hand up first.
All right, I, of course, the attorney has done what the board asked her to do, and I reviewed that policy. But my personal view is that we've got enough federal and state regulation to control everything. We've already got a policy from this county. But I want to ask the manager, how many, how many inquiries have you had about it, Scott?
Well, I've had one, one employee in one department that's actually submitted a doctor's note saying that he can't be around smoking. I've had the entire emergency management department has signed a petition saying that smoking is, is affecting them, and otherwise just, I mean, those are the formal ones. But I've had people come up to me, otherwise that-
In all of our agencies, departments, whatever, all of them have control except two now anyway. Is that what my information is?
Buildings and grounds is probably the biggest area that, that is not instituting a type of control. And then the communication center, 911, they're not smoking in the, in the center anymore, but they're smoking in a room next to it. And even though we have a, a industrial ventilation fan that's trying to take the smoke out, there's still being smoke that's being distributed down in the basement. To me, the, the biggest thing this does is prevents the county from being open to future liability or current liability. If an employee were to sue the county, saying that they've been subject to secondhand smoke, and that they've got physical conditions, and I don't know if the attorney would want to expound upon that in terms of liability, but-
Don't get me wrong.
Unless there's a question, I won't invite it.
Okay.
I want one more question.
Yes, sir.
If I may. Scott, had you determined where your designated smoking areas would be?
The county engineer and I have sat down and went campus by campus and have designated on a preliminary basis where we think would be appropriate smoking, designated smoking areas. He's going back with his staff and wants to map these out, and we're going to sit down. Since this won't be effective, if you pass it until July 1, we will still have time to further designate those areas, educate our workforce, those who do smoke. If you want us to bring it back to you. An example would be out at the, oh, the Human Services Center, the, and Health Department, there's an area between those two buildings that would be designated. Health Department, not that I think too many people will be smoking at Health, but probably the, the parking lot closest to Creek Side Road would be designated. So areas that would be close to the buildings, but yet, we want to make sure that the designated areas are not areas where there's intake, fresh air intakes coming back into the building, or that they're before a doorway where the smoke can be scooped back in. Like the front door of this building, folks sometimes think they can smoke out there and sit on the bench, but the problem is, when those doors open, the double doors, it's actually, and they close, it's-
I smell it up here right now, but go ahead.
Yeah, pull the smoke back in.
I think before I vote on this policy, I need to have these things that you and Phil have determined, so we know. We're given in this, in this ordinance or policy, whatever it is, it's not an ordinance, but the authority to the manager to designate where these areas are, when I vote on the thing, I'd like to know where they are. That's just one person's opinion. I'm throwing my-
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. James?
Yes. We had a motion. I don't quite get what we're going to. We had a motion. It was to be brought back before this board. It was a four-four tie. But yet, we come back here with all this other stuff. I went down to the, what are you talking about downstairs, with Norley? I didn't find what you're talking, they've got a big fan in that, will really draw it out. And all they have to do, well, I won't say what they got to do, but is Norley up here? Well-
He's not, but his employees do complain that they go-
Oh, I know.
-they go home with cigarette smoke in their clothes and-
There were two departments. But we made a ruling, voted, this board commissioners did. What year was it to our attorney, that we had this policy done? We gave it to the head of each department to make sure that they work with their employees. If they didn't want to smoke, then do away with the smoking. But it was their responsibility. Is that not right?
There were two occasions in the past, actually, where the board actually considered this, and then the last occasion gave the department heads the authority to-
To do it, that's exactly right. So I thought we would be voting on the motion. And then if, if that motion fail, if that, if Commissioner Webb's, if it fails, then it's solved. solved. That's it. If, but if it doesn't, then you go ahead and, well, I want to see this board stand up and say, look, I'm against you out here. And then we'll see what happens.
Back in 1999, when this issue came up, we actually viewed the tape on this. October 99, the former manager brought up the non-smoking policy. This is related to the new courthouse as it was being renovated and expanded and whatnot. And the actual motion read that the board voted five to three to dismiss the consideration of a non-smoking court, a non-smoking courthouse facility from the agenda. It really didn't designate, didn't really address anything any further as to whether the policy has been, at least since I've been here 10 years, is to allow the department heads to determine whether there'd be smoking or where it would be within the departments.
And the vote on March 26th was five to three.
Okay, it did pass. I thought that the motion passed. Mr. Harris, I have you next.
I wanted a clarification on the policy. If I look on page 78, under Section 4, it says where areas where smoking is prohibited, and it specifically says smoking will be strictly prohibited. Then when I look at Section 6, the signs required, the sign would say no smoking and use of tobacco products prohibited. And then on page 79, it also talks about each county employee responsible for adhering to the county policy to prohibit smoking and use of tobacco products. So are we talking about prohibiting smoking or prohibiting the use of tobacco products?
I would recommend that we delete those references in the later part. It's prohibiting smoking only.
Okay.
And there were multiple versions of this policy crafted before it came to you. And the end result does not prohibit use of tobacco products. We do have employees that work with CHU and different things like that. And this policy was intended just to impact the secondhand influence of smoke and not something that impacts somebody alone.
So those signs then would say no smoking.
Need to be modified to match for smoking, yes.
And also for the signage, we've gotten approval through the Community Transformation Grant to, I think it's Communities Putting Prevention to Work Grant, to spend up to $3,000 of that grant money for signage if the board so approve the policy.
Okay.
What's that last thing Scott said, Madam?
In terms of signage, we have checked with the Health Department, and they have checked with their folks with the Communities Putting Prevention to Work Grant, and there's funding within there that would pay for any signage that may be needed to post the county in terms of non-smoking, or maybe to post areas where smoking is designated.
Madam, may I ask one more question?
Yes, sir.
My attorney, did I read on here that if you got a county employee driving a tractor right here mowing the grass, that he can't smoke on that tractor?
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Webb, I have you down next.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I appreciate the staff for creating the policy. I think it's a good policy. I think it's a fair policy. I think it's not a heavy-handed policy when it comes to a violation. And I think it really brings us up to date on where we are in this country. And as far as, you know, we talked about federal and state controls on people's habits and their, what they do, this doesn't really affect what they do, it just affects the location in which they do it. Someone's right to engage in a behavior ends that another person's right not to engage in that behavior. And if you're smoking near somebody, they are engaging in that behavior because they're receiving the secondhand smoke. And if $20 million is a lot to upgrade a sewer system from 1929, then $5 to $10 million a pop for everyone who can draw a line from their employment to cancer is going to really rack up pretty fast. The department heads changed, so if we had a new department head in a different department tomorrow, that policy could change right with them, and we could go to 100% smoking facilities based on department heads and the current rules. So this gives us a buffer in that and allows us to put a policy and make a statement that we don't allow smoking in our buildings, and that's for the health of our employees as well as the public. I think it helps us with liability, as I mentioned before, and I'm sure insurance companies will look at that at some point as well when we're determining what we pay for insurance for our employees, which is a huge chunk of what we pay per employee, even more so a lot of times than salary and retirement benefits. So I think that it's a good policy, and I would motion that we approve this policy with the admissions that the attorney mentioned for non-smoked tobacco. And also ask in that motion that the smoking areas be brought back to us for final approval.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I second it.
Okay, the motion has been seconded, and we'll continue with our discussion. Mr. McGowan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As more and more national data is being revealed concerning secondhand smoke, I certainly think that this is, this policy is appropriate, and it puts some teeth to those individuals. Suppose I've gotten a lot of calls from building and grounds and other, some of the other places here in Pitt County concerning smoking. So, you know, and understanding, you've seen it, I've seen it on TV. They have the national, I even suppose to be putting some more additional teeth in cigarette, on cigarette pikes on the pictures that secondhand smoke have a devastating effect on people exposed to them. So I think that this would put some teeth into it, and I certainly concur. We don't often always agree, Commissioner Webb announced certain things, but I definitely agree with him on this one.
Okay, just a moment, I have someone who hasn't spoken. Mr. Smith wants to speak, and then I'll come back to Mr. Owens and then you.
Probably when this first came up, I was against this policy. I hadn't had anyone to call me about it, but I got thinking. When you, I just hate any policy that takes the right of the American people away. And yet, you look at the other side, it takes the right of the non-smokers away. But it's something that probably registered in my mind more than this. Smoke from tobacco is very noxious to a lot of people. It gets in the clothes, and then I got thinking about the people that were pregnant, were going to have a baby, and what this would do to the fetus that they were carrying. And this is not good. So I would vote today to support our attorney's motion, or Mr. Webb's motion.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Owens?
No, I didn't.
Okay, Mr. James?
Well, I'm certainly against my friend, my friend, so forth, and I know I'm going to lose, but I believe.
Well, not your friend, Mr. James?
He is. I believe in the rights of the individual, and I believe we have people in Pitt County who are smart enough, and I don't believe everything I see on TV and everything somebody's always talking on secondhand smoke or whatever you want it to be. I'm a good example. Look at me. I smoke sometimes, and get out there and work with me, and I won't tell you how old I am. So it's a lot of things that is worse than smoking, and that's one, drugs, alcohol. Need to outlaw that maybe, not spending the county money or hospital money on it. But anyway, I think this is wonderful, that this board has the opportunity to take a vote, to express our opinions. I think you're wrong taking the rights of the individual people away. Tobacco built East Carolina University. It built this place that you're sitting in, and, well, we won't go there.
Okay.
And it did, believe me, it did. So now you want to cut the head off, okay? And you're hurting a lot of farmers. That's my contention.
Don't disappoint me.
A whole lot of farmers.
Okay, is there, I think we've had plenty of discussion.
Yes.
Based on all of my list down here. So we will vote on the motion. And I wanted to reiterate that you included that the locations of the designated smoking areas would be brought back for our approval.
As well as striking the other language for the.
Yes, as taking out the other tobacco products. Okay, let's vote, please. Okay, it passes. And now we have appointments and reappointments to the farmers market. Mr. Elliott?
On the farmers market policy committee, you have James Wilbert Futrell's term on the farmers market committee expired last month. Donnie Haddock, Mike Skinner's terms will expire May 4. The committee is recommending that Mr. Futrell and Mr. Skinner be reappointed for another three-year term. They're also recommending that you appoint a new Mr. Sam Hardy to a three-year term.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, okay. Let's vote, please.
What's that?
There are two reappointments and one new appointment. Correct.
Correct.
Okay, I'm going to move to closed session. We have a closed session item on our agenda. Madam Attorney, if you'll take us into closed session?
It has been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11A3, to consult with an attorney employed by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged, and also 143, 318.11A1, to prevent the disclosure of confidential information.
Okay, I'd like to have a motion to go into closed session.
So may I?
Second.
Okay, let's vote, please. And we will take a 10-minute break prior to going into closed session.
You got a please, my God.
Yes, sir. Malvin and Mr. James, would you vote for closed session?
Yes, I certainly will.
Thank you.
Good morning, still. We are coming out of closed session. Thank you for your patience.
Madam Chairman, I have a motion that we approve the minutes as to the content only for March 12, 2012, closed session.
Second.
All those in favor, let's vote, please. And our next item, our commissioner's comments. Mr. Owens?
Only for the, and I mentioned this before the meeting with the manager, I'm sure some of you got a lot of, with enclosures, dealing with the insurance of our employees.
Yes.
And I hope that the manager would give us something to adequately to counteract that or respond to that, because we certainly want our employees to be treated as fairly and as well, better than anybody else.
And I had given mine to the manager. Thank you, Mr. Owens. Mr. James?
Have no comment.
Mr. McGowan?
Voting is tomorrow. I ask that you get out and exercise your right to vote.
Mr. Smith?
No comment.
No comment?
No comment.
Mr. Hammond?
No.
Mr. Webb? Motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Okay, let's vote, please. Thank you very much, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you, Lord.